The time is 6:00 PM, Council City of Denison, not in meetings and regular sessions. Tonight's agenda is to give the best for today's competitive group. And Mr. President, your side.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and your many blessings, another day on which to serve thee. We pray, Lord, for the business at hand tonight, that you give wisdom and discernment, that you support grace and peace over words of everyone who speaks. But when all is said and done, it will go to the progress of your kingdom and help us to be better citizens. We'll be careful to give you the praise in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I want to introduce the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone, for being here. We've got two exciting presentations we're going to start the council meeting with so that we can recognize those that need to be recognized and then you can have the opportunity to leave and not sit through the rest of this time. So I'll start with Joe and Tim. Thank you.
Kind of turn around here. So I'm excited to show you all tonight an award that the city has received recently from the Texas Municipal League. And I want to invite the partners in our affordable housing program to join me up here. If you can all come up, I can see a few of you out there. Don't be shy. Because this truly, even though it was the city that received the award, this truly was a joint effort, a team effort on behalf of many of the city's builders, lenders, our banks and financial institutions, and many others who worked hard to make this possible. And so we want to show you the hardware here. This is an award, like I said, from the Texas Municipal League. This is a municipal excellence award. This is two years in a row that the city's received this award. And so I think that says a lot about the city of Denison. And again, we're very excited and happy to have this and show this and recognize this with our partners here in the city. And Mayor, you want to take it from there?
I do. Gentlemen, thank you for being here. I know there are several not able to be with us today. Actually, I do see Robert Sylvester Gill come up as one of our leading partners. I see Robert Crowley waiting for an announcement to come in. Robert Crowley as our lenders. Again, the city council had the privilege to adopt the program, but you know, this is really not about our staff or our council. This is about doing things that help lay the groundwork for the private sector to do what they do. And you know, we can sit in an office and come up with all the plans and strategies and everything that we think will help you, but unless you guys are risking your own capital and unless the banks are willing to give generous terms, projects like this don't happen. So just wanted to thank you guys for your part in the process and willingness to put your own capital at risk to help with our affordable housing program. As you can see from some of the pictures up there, I think we've got three that have now sold and two sales that are pending. So obviously, there was a demand for this that we thought. And the community's been wrestling with this affordable housing, this infill program lots for several years, but I think we finally hit on something that works, and it's because of you guys in this room and others that have taken the risk to go out and build. So for that, we want to share this award with you. It really is, it's the City of Denison's award. You guys are the ones that really make it happen every day. So I wanted to thank you.
Thanks, y'all. Next, we're going to skip down to item number 5A, public work staff. Mr. Howard.
Thank you all very much for having this item tonight. It's probably the, I guess it's about the most proud thing I've ever done for our staff. So get that out of the way. I really just wanted to introduce this group to you because of the work that they do and how important it is. But the thing that, I guess I have a special place in the heart for them because at the heart of city service, it's 24/7. And we have guys that are scheduled to do work, but these guys answer the phone and then go to work, and whether they've had sleep or whether they haven't. And I just can't tell you that it's a big deal. And I'll try to convey that through this presentation. You hear this, there are tough jobs. It's a tough job. Somebody's got to do it. These guys really do tough jobs and they're perfectly suited for doing it, and they do it every day. Challenges, challenges, challenges. Weather's our number one challenge, without question. If it's hot and dry, if it's cold, if it's dry, if it's mild, weather's a problem. The biggest issues are just the same impact zones to homes. The upper eight feet of your crust in North Texas is just subject to movement. That's where most of our lines are. And so when people's foundations, they have to protect against home damage, well, that's where our water lines are. And that's where you see a lot of our trouble is in that upper eight feet, and it has to do with the movement of soil. And soil moves when it's really hot and moves when it's really cold, to the extreme at either end. But in the middle, like right now, when you're changing seasons, it's moving. It's moving from a hot condition to a cooler condition. Anything that moves impacts these lines. And the older the lines are, my next bullet point, the more you have this condition. And Denison is 140 years plus old now, and so we have some old lines. One of the things I'd say is oftentimes when we get into a circumstance where we identify that maybe a contractor did poor work, even employees that have gone on before us have done poor work, and then we have to go back in and we fix it right. And we make it a point that whenever we're inside a trench, these guys, they do the job and they don't quit until it's done. There's other city projects that present challenges. The tank that we took down right now, the Parkdale Ground Storage Tank, that's a 3 million gallon ground storage tank that works at the same level as our two elevator towers. It's out of service right now in the summer. And we had had all that rain in the spring. We thought it was perfect to be having that out of service. And unfortunately, we had some dry weather, and we found all the weak spots, we think, for now, in the lines. Matter of fact, the guys found it. At one point, I had to quit counting, but I counted three dozen leaks in six days, large leaks, not small leaks. The small leaks are still, we're still dealing with those. Very large leaks, big lines. Another issue that these guys deal with are contractors. We do our best to locate lines. They do their best not to hit lines, but it happens. And I think everybody has seen this new fiber project that just went from the south end of town all the way to the north end of town. And they did a good job, but they didn't miss all of the water lines. As I get into the photographs, there's just some examples. The main thing that some of these guys were, they're big old boys, but they'll say that the camera adds a few pounds, so be kind to them. When you show up at a job, this was a job this spring, and you get a complaint, maybe there's something wrong with the system where you find it through a routine check. You show up, you've got a 15-inch sewer that a storm has come and washed the sewer that's been in place for three or four decades, and it just washes off its pedestals. Same thing happened behind what we call charards of the bus barn. And those rains that kept coming this year, we had, you can see the steel that is extended across. This was just a bare line without a casing pipe. So we decided to fix it right, put in a casing pipe, and right in the middle of our work, we get another spot showered. And that's the Iron Ore Creek, and that's how full it was that day while we were working after one of these showers came through with saturated soil conditions. And it's all the way up to our job, and we just had to stop and wait for a little while. This happened out on Ray Drive this year. The saturated soil conditions, like we've never seen before, collapsed a sewer right there in the street and just flattened it into a pancake. And the guys had to quickly put that back into service. But in the meantime, for a 24-hour period, around the clock, we sent the flush truck out and pumped from a collection manhole, either into another manhole or took it to the treatment plant, whatever we did, but we had to keep those people in service. But that's the, that's the working conditions at time where that trench block is deep as they are. This was two weeks ago tomorrow, Bond and Chamber. And the guys, when they have big leaks, they're normally, they know all these checkpoints. This one was in the middle of town, and I think everybody in the neighborhood was asleep. And it may not have shown itself this bad until nearly daylight, but they looked for it all night long, and we didn't find it till about 4:00 in the morning. This just shows an example of the old pipes. You can see how large a section blew out, but if you look closely, you can see the crack is about 20-foot-long crack. If you might recognize that, it's State Highway 91. A lot of the valves that we have are old, and they're not always, you can't always count on them to isolate the water. And so the raincoats come out, and the guys have to fix a leak under pressure. And you have to be careful because it will poke your eye out. This is one of the ones that was hit by the contractor recently near Coffin and State Highway 91 Woodlawn, right there. And they hit an old fire hydrant leak, and so everybody in the south end of town was clamoring for water until we get that one fixed. But that's a, it takes a lot of work to dig a hole that big and then do the work whenever somebody accidentally hits our pipes. Same thing here. This was a contractor on Coffin Street. And it, we love contractors. They do a lot of good things, but sometimes they generate work for us. This is a, if you, the very top is US 75, top left corner. This is the 24-inch line, I'm sorry, 2,400 feet of 12-inch line that we committed to replace because it needs to be replaced. But this is from the Loy Lake Park entrance all the way to Mr. Johnson's project subdivision. And it's a big job whenever we don't have storms. We committed to a half a mile of 12-inch line with all the storms and all the work, extra work we've had this year. It's going to be a challenge for us to get all this done, but we're working on it. The reason we had to go so deep here is because it wouldn't quit, Loy Lake wouldn't quit overflowing, and there was a lot of water in the creek, and we had to go deeper so that, because we couldn't dig across, straight across the creek. Anyway, I'll continue. This looks like a war zone, but this is right next to the Independent Bank. And we didn't know about this leak until their basin filled all the water, and it was coming out their stairwell, and shut off their alarm. But that's the 100 block of North Burnett. Donna wishes we wouldn't make messes like this, but every now and then we have to, downtown too. The mayor's familiar with this job. I think he visited that one. Sometimes they work at night just to schedule a shutdown or a repair for the benefit of customers and some of the fewer people to be impacted. But that was a big job. We also helped the water plant. This is our 36-inch line. There was a small leak out there, and we had to do all the excavation work so that the specialists could come in and do the point repair there that needed to be made. As I've said, 2015's been a very difficult year. We've had all the rain. Then when it was, when it quit raining, everybody wanted it to quit raining, and it did. It quit raining. And we had two months without rain, and it really, we found, as I said, the weak spots, and it was worsened because the ground storage tank at Parkville is out of service. The automated meter reading project, we've got a forum for that this week, but the thing that the guys have done is taken about four people full-time to help make that project work. Two of them were meter service people anyway. So we've been very busy facilitating that project to where that they're going to be done two months ahead of time. And the punch list that they were generating of all the things that need to be taken care of, that's, we've already addressed the punch list. So we're ready to go. We're right on top of it. In fact, there's been plenty of years. I think you can just see by the shape of the curves, the point that I want to make here. This is 10 years of overtime. The left group is about a dozen fellows that get paid overtime in Division 84 for water distribution. The middle grouping is 10 years in Division 86, which is the Wishwater Collection. So there's 17 guys. And the right grouping is a collection of both of them. It's the totals. And we normally budget about $50,000 to $60,000 in overtime. This year, we're going to be over $100,000 for this fiscal year. And Renee doesn't like that, but we had to do it. Overtime is nice, but money isn't everything. These 17 employees had a total of 4,300 hours or six and a half weeks. Six and a half weeks up to 10 weeks for some of the guys just not being at home and being on call, being regularly on call every third week. Now, it's being changed every fourth week. I'll just give you, I'll finish with these photographs. This is, I think, Councilwoman Adams. This happened about her first day to sign up for the city council's job, so I wanted to already see this. This was 12-inch line on Loy Lake. And this is the middle of the day. You know, it's bright and sunny. This is later in the day. The shadows are long. You can see the hole in the pipe that created such a big leak. You can see a gas service line that they had to dig the whole project around and protect that gas service line. And then here, you see the guys with the flashlights and the lights, the spotlights from the equipment. They start early and a lot of times they finish late. And the worst thing that happens is when you fix a line and you go to turn it back on, and it breaks one or two times within the same block. And we had one, we, we had a list of CIP projects. We've added one to that over the last years because we had a dozen leaks in about a four block space this year. I don't know why, but that line says it's through. And you see, I made it all the way through this presentation without mentioning Chestnut. No, I just said Chestnut. Anyway, what they wanted to say is thank you very much for the new team members. Very much needed. Now, I also want to thank you guys for budgeting for the shop improvements. And I guarantee you, it's their great pleasure to serve the citizens and customers of this.
Would, with that team that David's talked about, go please stand and be recognized. Before you all leave and check out to get home to your families or be on call for six weeks, on behalf of the council, we just wanted to truly say thank you. You know, when I'm asked to speak at schools or events and as the mayor, I, with kids, I always talk about what does your city government do for you? Because unfortunately, even as adults, I'm afraid that the government that impacts us the most, we know the least about. A lot of people know about their federal government, their state government. They know very little about how cities operate. But when we put it down into terms of when you turn on that water in the morning to brush your teeth or flush the toilet, that makes it very real to those households, and you guys make that happen every day. And we are sincerely appreciative of your work. Those few slides are just a small sample of what you do in some of the worst conditions and weather elements. And again, we say thank you for your efforts. With that, unless you want to stay, we'll let you stay up. Okay, we'll move on into item number three, the consent agenda.
Move for approval, consent agenda is presented.
Motion for Councilman Gaud, second to Councilman Alverton. I would better by saying aye.
Aye.
Prose like a sign. Motion carries. Item 4A, public hearings, 1320 South Austin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight for your review and approval is a conditional use permit request. Property is 1320 South Austin Avenue. The requested use is to have a tire shop with no outside storage. Property is currently zoned local retail. The use charge requires a conditional use for tires. Here's a picture of the property here. Planning is in commission recommended unanimously with a couple of provisions, one being that the facility be painted, as you can see, as a service station. As of Friday, it has branded coat of paint, so it's looking good. The other request for the planning is on a commission was that they, when they occupied it, put some plant, so some flowers out because it's in one of the entryway corridors to the city. Staff recommends approval, and your next step would be to hold a public hearing.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda?
I was just, uh...
Name and address, please, for the record.
325 East Forest Avenue Insurance.
Thank you.
And I'm here on behalf of Depple's Distributing, who owns the property, and I'm ready to answer any questions if you want.
Do you want to hear who wishes to speak to this agenda? If there being none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Melvin is here. Do you have anything new to add?
Yeah.
Questions from council? Okay, and that will, no action taken will be a public meeting, right?
Yes, yeah, the action will be taken the November 2nd council meeting.
The second public hearing being unsavable?
Yes.
All right. Item 4C, public hearing on unsafe structure 401 East Hall Street.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight we have one structure at demolition. On June 24th, 2015, LBI Group Company Incorporated was given notice of violation to repair or demolish the structure at 401 East Hall. The owner has failed to comply with the notice. The structure is unsafe and a potential fire hazard. The structure is not weather-tied, and it's an attractive nuisance. Our record of the violation notices an unsafe condition of the property or on file with the building department. I'm asking the council to declare the structure as an unsafe structure and order the removal of the structure within 10 days after notice of council's decision. This is the old Madonna Hospital. This is a picture where all the windows are broken out. This is water damage on the inside of the structure. These are all throughout this building. These are parts of the wings of the old wing. And this is where someone is living. This is in one of the wings, and that kind of looks like this, and someone has gone in there and made a pretty nice room. So I don't know how, if there's more of these. This particular section that this is in, it, all the windows are boarded. It is so dark that they look like they're pretty happy there. So, and that's the pictures that we have here.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda? If there being none, the public hearing is closed. Betty, so how would we look to take this down? Would, I know we have a crew. Is this bigger than our crew can handle?
We would ask for our speaker.
Motion for council.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion from Councilman Raleigh, second to Councilman Alverton. If there was a say aye, prose like a sign. Motion carries. Courtney, on that one in particular, do we need anything about filing a lien since it's commercial or automatically will happen because that's our policy?
We will draft a lien after the demolition is completed, but yes, the statute gives us the authority to file a lien.
All right. Item 5B, presentation from T-CO, we have Mr. Judy Connor here at Virginia Roads. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much for having us here so that we can tell you about some of our services. I'm from Texas County Council Governments, the Area Agency on Aging. And we are funded in part federally from the, by the Older Americans Act. But with all the services that we do have and we do offer, we've had to find different ways to pull in grants and donations and private sources so that we can put out the services to the people in those gaps. And we do serve with the Area Agency on Aging, age 60 and over, but we do have services for underserved also. And just to let you know, we do have a senior source book. We publish this once a year. This is due through December and will be published again. I brought extra to lead, but it has resources. Our entire thoughts are to keep the person living independently as long as possible where they want to live. So we do that by providing some in-home support, meals delivered to the home, caregivers who are taking care of their loved ones. We try to assist them in so many different ways so that they can stay at home and not have to enter a facility prematurely. One of the, one of the ways that we do that is with the Alzheimer's Respite Program. We have two or three different ways that we can offer respite care to people who are in that type of situation. And I did bring some brochures, and I'll leave those tonight, too. But you can give us a call. We'll be able to explain to you any type of Alzheimer's and dementia. We do have some respite programs for that. And we do, to, like I said, we do have different ways of raising funds to supplement those partial funds that we receive from the federal government. And one of the big things that we're having is a caregiver gala. That's going to be on December 31st. It's going to be a New Year's Eve gala, which is a dinner and dance. And it's going to be at the Hilton. We have the Gainesville Swing Orchestra. So it's the first time that we know of that there's a nice dinner and dance that you can actually go to up in this area without traveling all the way to Dallas or somewhere to do just that. And just, again, all of the funds that are raised goes right back into the caregiver program to provide funding for respite care, for a program at Wolfson &amp; Jones that allows the caregiver a break for books, for resources, for counseling. It goes right back into the community. Grayson Fannin and Cook...
Have a motion from Councilman Raleigh, second from Councilman Malverton. If everybody's saying aye. Pose like a sign. Motion carries. Courtney, on that one in particular, do we need anything about filing a lien since it's commercial or automatically will happen because that's our policy?
We will draft a lien after the demolition is completed, but yes, the statute gives us the authority to file a lien.
All right. Agenda on five B, presentation from TCOG. We have Mr. Judy Connor here at Virginia Rhodes. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much for having us here so that we can tell you about some of our services. I'm with Texas County Council Governments, the Area Agency on Aging. And we are funded in part federally from the, by the Older Americans Act. But with all the services that we do have and we do offer, we've had to find different ways to pull in grants and donations and private sources so that we can put out the services to the people in those gaps. And we do serve with the Area Agency on Aging, age sixty and over, but we do have services for underserved also. And just to let you know, we do have a senior source book. We publish this once a year. This is due through December and will be published again. I brought extra to lead, but it has resources. Our entire thoughts are to keep the person living independently as long as possible where they want to live. So, we do that by providing some in-home support, meals delivered to the home caregivers who are taking care of their loved ones. We try to assist them in so many different ways so that they can stay at home and not have to enter a facility prematurely. One of the, one of the ways that we do that is with the Alzheimer's respite program. We have two or three different ways that we can offer respite care to people who are in that type of situation. And I did bring some brochures, and I'll leave those tonight, too. But you can give us a call. We'll be able to explain to you any type of Alzheimer's and dementia. We do have some respite programs for that. And we do, to, like I said, we do have different ways of raising funds to supplement those partial funds that we receive from the federal government. And one of the big things that we're having is a caregiver gala. That's going to be on December thirty-first. It's going to be a New Year's Eve gala, which is the dinner and dance. And it's going to be at the Hilton. We have the Gainesville Swing Orchestra. So, it's the first time that we know of that there's a nice dinner and dance that you can actually go to up in this area without traveling all the way to Dallas or somewhere to do just that. And just, again, all of the funds that are raised goes right back into the caregiver program to provide funding for respite care, for a program at Wolfson and Jones that allows the caregiver a right for books, for resources, for counseling. It goes right back into the community, Grayson, Fannin, and Cook counties. So, I brought a lot of those extras. And on the website, hopefully by the end of this week, we will have all of this information about the dinner and dance. It's called All That Jazz. And our website will be tcog.com. And you'll just locate where it says All That Jazz, and you should be able to purchase tickets online and let us know that you want to be there. Or if you'd like to know more information or talk about it, you can certainly give us a call. But again, we hope to have that up there by the end of this week or certainly by next week.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity. My name is Virginia Rhodes, and I am the Texas County Senior Core Volunteer Program Manager at TCOG. And so, we're here today basically to stay a little bit about our volunteer program. In case you don't know, we actually have two programs that fall under Senior Core. And it's our foster grandparent program, and it's our retired senior volunteer program. The primary goal, basically, is to just bridge the gap between people aged fifty-five and older who want to serve, and then the agencies of community or the people who need the service and partner those people up. The two programs, again, are foster grandparent, which the grandparent program actually started in nineteen ninety-seven here in Texoma. We currently have like twenty-six stations within our three-county area, Grayson, Cook, and Fannin, and about thirty-nine volunteers. Those volunteers, to be eligible, have to meet certain income requirements. They have to pass a criminal, they have to pass a physical check, and they have to be willing to serve at least fifteen hours a week. With that, because of that, we do provide a small diet, and we also help with mileage as well. They, of course, have to, what their focus is, is to help nurture children, help them, they're focused, they work with their teachers. The teacher identifies students who need help, who need that extra whatever, and so they work with that list. And, and just kids with special needs, because there are a lot of parents who work a lot of times, two jobs or whatever, single parent households, whatever. So, our kids lack sometimes, maybe not intentionally, but it happens. And so, our grandparents come in and give that pat on the back or that comfort or listen to them read or whatever is necessary for that particular child in order to make them successful. Another program is the RSVP program. That program does not have a stipulation on the amount of hours. The person just has to be willing, of course, be fifty-five at least, but then have a heart to serve and be willing to at least contribute at an hour a month. Those volunteers are in hospitals, mills on wheels, crisis centers, soup kitchens, wherever, wherever there's a need. We also have a program that's called our Friends in Action Program. And it's for people who are basically homebound, who may need rides to the doctor but are not it, don't have a way to do it, are unable to use tasks for whatever reason. And so, those people will, basically, they'll call in, get an appointment, and we will basically hook them up with someone who can take them to the drive to their doctor's appointment, run small errands and that kind of thing. And just to give you a little bit, it's a simple process. All they have to do, all you have to do is fill out an application for that, and we have the rest as far as assignments and everything. To give you an idea, in two thousand and fourteen, the two programs combined did a hundred and twenty-seven, more than a hundred and twenty-seven thousand hours. That contributes to three point one million dollars in services. So, think about that, you know? A lot of times, people think, well, it's not that big of a deal, but yes, it is, yes, it is, yes, it is. So, we're here to push that issue and also to put the word out that if anybody knows of anyone that is interested in perhaps the foster grandparent program or maybe interested in being a volunteer driver, that we are interested in talking to them and asking to come our way. And I'm just close with that we believe volunteers are essential to the communities in which they serve, and that we feel like they give the best gift of all and that's themselves. Thank you. And I also brought some information to leave in case somebody else wishes to know.
Is it okay just to leave it there? Do we have to...
Sure, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Uh-huh.
Agenda on five C, playable musical public park downtown, Ms. Dow.
Mayor and Council, we come back before you tonight to discuss this subject, and in April, you agreed to allow us to place playable musical art on the mid-block crossings at the two, three, and four hundred block. And so, when we were, we were going to have the contractor go ahead and install these, and they were out marking. And so, some of the newer property owners realized what was happening and were concerned about it, and so, we're bringing this back before you to discuss it again. We have obtained permission from downtown Denison, Inc. to place it in the Heritage Park, and then we could also place it in the Pocket Park. This wasn't, the Pocket Park was not our initial recommendation because our previous city manager wanted to, you know, had other ideas for it and wanted to do it at one time, and so, we didn't want to put just musical instruments there that could be moved. These can be moved if, if we don't like them, how we'd rather put them in their temporary permanent location as soon as we could. For instance, if we do develop the Pocket Park, then we can move them to another location at that time. We just don't want to move them a lot because it would, you know, they would deteriorate based on that. So, tonight we have representatives here from the Main Street Advisory Board, from downtown Denison, Inc., and then some of the property owners that you may wish to hear from on the, we should have questions at me.
We have several, several folks that have decided to speak. Do we have any questions from council before we hear?
Just curious, what was the objection to where they were originally going to be placed?
The location outside loft windows.
Just for clarification, what is the, the goal of the projects that we've been doing for downtown? Whether it's the musical instruments, the piano, you know, the piano keys, the main entertainment, what's the point of all of this?
Well, this would be to create an interactive experience amongst our visitors and, and people that are shopping.
It's to bring people downtown?
Right.
Okay.
And to enhance their experience while they're there.
Okay. So, the goal of the substantial amount of money that the city puts into helping downtown, the whole goal is to bring people downtown, shop downtown? Okay.
And support our businesses.
Yeah, I just want to clarify about that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Donna, what, are these instruments mostly like bass-producing instruments? Are they more treble that doesn't travel as far, or, you know, chimes and stuff, or beat drums?
Well, I'm not heard in personally, but they're not supposed to be like, you know, loud. We have a noise ordinance, and of course, we wouldn't be able to go against our noise ordinance, but there's, there's pagoda bells that are drums, and so, those would be a percussion instrument. But it's not like a steel drum, you know? It's just a drum that, that has a, you know, like a, I would think a plastic surface on it. And then we have a xylophone mic instrument that you would ding, and then we have the pagoda bells that you would also ding. So, again, I've not personally experienced them. They're not supposed to emit a lot, you know, a lot of noise, but I can't speak to that anymore than...
Okay.
Just for clarification, if we go in the Pocket Park and Heritage Park, then that leaves nothing for the four hundred block, is that right?
That would be right. And the reason we chose the mid-block crossings, those are the only locations with the mid-block crossings, and it's kind of in the center of the district.
And Donna, it also made sense because we have the piano keys there.
Right.
Okay. Chad Leisure. You would name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Chad Leisure. I own three ten West Main, Denison, Texas, and appreciate you guys hearing us today. But I think one of our main concerns with the interactive instruments is we recognize that we want to drive people downtown. Actually, it's of best interest for all of us. I mean, we are, we have skin in the game in the downtown area as well.
And Chad, when you say wait, you keep referring to waiters?
Like property owners.
Okay. So, are you speaking on behalf of others?
Well, I'm actually speaking for myself right now, but I, I think it's kind of a consensus with a few owners down there. We didn't have much of an understanding of where things were going. Now, I got a phone call as far as the placement of the instruments, recognizing that I just recently purchased a building, want to live upstairs, also want to attract a tenant to come in and bring a viable business to our downtown area. And essentially, the, with the musical instrument, obviously, it's going to make noise. Now, at what point in time, if you have a residence, would you like to have a bell outside of your apartment and possibly be ringing at all hours of the night? And so, that was a concern of ours, or of mine. And the other thing is, is, for example, the xylophone that was presented, it's a pretty large piece. It could also, you know, ideally, you want to have exposure if you have an uptown business. The size of it could also detract from your window, which you're trying to showcase your merchandise. And so, well, I think that the placement personally should be more in an area where you're going to have more traffic, like the park. The photos that were presented on the number of the instruments, the setting could be like a park setting. And so, I just request that you make a consideration for those that are actually living down there and also running their business to recognize that we want traffic to be downtown on Main Street. We want to offer up businesses, we want to offer, we want to be a living community. But we think that there could be a detraction or a nuisance if the consideration isn't made for the people that live down there.
Couple of questions for you. So, to the proposed location, you're supportive of the new locations?
Absolutely.
Okay. And when did you buy, when did you buy your property?
Um, just over a year ago.
Okay. So, how, how does that fall into when August was being considered and participation in downtown property ownership?
We started the Streetscape master plan in August, or in two thousand and eleven, and presented it to you, council, for approval in November of two thousand and twelve. And it's on the city website. Then since then, we went to the Streetscape, the visioning process, and that was in January, February of two thousand and fourteen, and came, we had really good participation if you were there in the process when we had the meeting. A lot of the things we heard from that, of course, we didn't come to any conclusions at that meeting, but a lot of things we heard from that were the top three things, one of them was Streetscape. And so, you know, that kind of goes to Councilman Hanley's question a while ago. One, one thing that we've heard from everybody, and probably Chad would agree to, is that Streetscape is very important to the visual appeal and the, you know, just the look of downtown. So, that was how we've come to this point, and then the design committee took that and chose, the design committee on Main Street took that and chose the playable musical arts to be the first priority, and we obtained a grant from Union Pacific, and then came back to you in April of two thousand and fifteen to request placement of the instrument.
Yes, so that timing probably doesn't work too good because you came in after, I guess you bought property after. And then to the, to the entertainment district piece as a, as a loft, I mean, I think doing the vision with the whole live music downtown to be such that there will be lively music and entertainment late at evening, so I guess, where's, where's the disconnect? Not suggesting that this is what you would want outside your window if someone was constantly , but just the idea that it's not going to be quiet at night on weekends per se, I mean, let's see.
Yeah, I don't think the disconnect is necessarily the entertainment aspect of it or having live music. I mean, that's a given. But if you just think about your residence, okay, and placing a drum or xylophone outside of it, and the potential for somebody that's walking down the street at three o'clock in the morning downtown Denison, or let's say, one of our bars lets out at three o'clock in the morning, and somebody comes and bangs on a drum, would that, and just think of yourself, would that be something that you would like? And if it is, then I would just offer up, please, I mean, definitely make the consideration.
Here's the difference, and, and I understand I'm, I'm a Main Street loft owner as well, and my office is on Main Street. The, the problem I have that, that really caused me off having weight arguments is the fact that you wouldn't have a bell in your, in your front yard if you were in a, if you were in a neighborhood. If you come to downtown, there has to be a certain level of expectation that it is an industrial area, so it's going to be, you know, that's like me complaining, you know, I live in, in the two hundred block, that's like me complaining about the traffic on Austin Avenue, you know? I mean, I, I moved there knowing that the benefit of being on Main Street also has its detractions, and some of those things are what, what the city is heavily subsidizing, trying to get folks into this district. I think that's what has frustrated me about this opposition is, one, there are a lot of people who spend a lot of time on it, but the other part is, if you want complete quiet or you don't want something like that in front of your deal, I guess I'm struggling with why, why, why folks are surprised by that living downtown. And I think that's where my struggle is with this, because I, while, you know, while we all, any owners on the, on Main Street have put a tremendous amount of money in, the city has put in a, you know, a tremendous amount of resources to getting it to that point. So, I think that's my struggle, is, is taking the good with the bad or the positives with the negatives on, on Main Street. So, I think that's mine.
I respect that. I mean, the thing is, is the location placement could be suited in another area. It doesn't necessarily mean that we don't want it down there. That's not what we're saying. I mean, we've had some interaction as far as surveys of what would you like downtown on Main Street, and it could be a wide variety of people that are taking those surveys, not necessarily people that own property down there. And so, for us, yeah, bring it down. We want people down there. That is what we want. I mean, that's the reason why we're best in owners in the community. That's the whole goal, is to make Denison grow. But at the same time, I think that there needs to be some consideration for those that are going to have a residence, and that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
I follow your name, and you feel like your point's been made, or you don't have anything to say that, that's why you're here. Tom Solomon? Name and address, please, for the record.
Good evening. My name is Tom Solomon. We own three twelve, three fourteen West Main. Many of the items that Chad has mentioned, I support and echo, and a couple of things I might add if I have liberty to. One of the things about living, I mean, I, I know that we want to promote that because in the city, you'd want to promote all of these second and third stories to be occupied, whether it be offices, loft living. You'd want something in there where you, where you can, obviously, for the tax revenues or whatever, but it's not just the loft living, and you're in an industrial area, and, you know, you expect the eventual, I mean, the sirens, the train whistle to me is a musical instrument itself, but the, the illegal exhaust once in a while, I understand all that. But the issue is that any, any percussion instrument right outside of your retail business that you're trying to make a living at, you're trying to generate the sales tax revenues, sell merchandise, you might have an office, but it mostly would be retail. But if you've got xylo, I mean, a bunch of teenagers, let's just say, outside pounding on the xylophones and the drums right outside of your retail business, not yards, but feet from your door. If you don't have a customer coming your front door, you're out of business. And if there's one reason that you can think of not to bring a customer in, would be a congregation inside of your, in front of your store. Just common sense would tell you that. So, that's all I'm saying is, I believe that, I believe, we didn't know about the program when we purchased last year, and we're in the process of spending a lot of money to remodel these buildings, but we're vacant, and we want to bring that business with ourselves to Denison as we move into town. But, but it's, it's not that that, we didn't know that, but that those were going to be placed, it's not, it's not the fact that where they're going to be placed is probably more the issue. In a park setting, jogging trail, nature walks, these would be wonderful kind of instruments to interact with nature, maybe, I don't know, but right in front of your stores and... But right in front of your stores, and just have the courtesy of where these are going to be placed, I would have thought the city should have maybe a committee, just visit with the store owners, get those placements, and just ask for some interaction from, what do you think, it's already a done deal, ask, what do you think about these being placed up in front of your building? And give that response then, before, before it was a big shock and a big surprise to see these percussion instruments coming in from your building. So, I don't want to sound like a whiner or complainer, but I'm just saying that that's not conducive for business to be in front of your store. I'm just, I think if every store owner, you were to ask, it would tell you that. Now, if they're leasing that building, I don't know. Well, but the owners, I don't see how it would be, it would be, it would increase your property value to have that in front of your building. That's the bottom line. So, I'll, do you have any questions with me?
Thank you.
Did I forget anything?
You asking me?
Yes, a 35-year veteran, sorry, I've got to check the boss.
Just the fact that it's, our bedroom's right there?
Yes, again, it's the master bedroom just happens to be the location, and again, industrial downtown, I understand, you accept certain things. But Chad mentioned it, that three o'clock in the morning, bar blows and banging out there, that's, that ain't right. That ain't right. So, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Robert Dixon?
Robert Dixon, I'm a business owner and property owner in 500 block at 513 West Main, and I don't want to be redundant, I don't know, I'll try to be brief, because I know there are others that want to speak. But I think there are some other issues that need to be addressed other than the noise factor. The, the process of determining where these instruments were going to be placed, and the fact that, well, first of all, that we were going to have instruments, began, as most, all of you know, a long, long time ago. And it started in a committee with the Main Street program. And the majority of those people on that committee voted to do this. And then it was taken to the Main Street Advisory Board, the Main Street Advisory Board. The majority of those members voted to do this. And then it was brought before City Council, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the majority of City Council voted to do this. We had a plan. The keyboard crosswalks went in, they looked great. But in order to tie this all together and make it make sense, the, the instruments, I believe, need to be placed where they originally were designed to be placed with the keyboard crosswalks. My business is in 500 block. We're not getting anything out of this. I'm not upset about that. But I would be very happy to have a musical instrument in front of my business. It's just an opposing point of view, it's, there's nothing, you know, the thing I would want to emphasize is there's, this is not about personalities, it's not about individuals making decisions. These decisions were made by groups of people all the way through the entire process. And so, it's, as I said, it's not about personalities, it's not about being on one side or another, it's about a difference of opinion. But, and the other thing, real briefly, that I think needs to be pointed out, is because we have been designated as an entertainment district by the state of Texas, there are certain expectations that the state of Texas has that go along with that designation. And if the city of Demoson does not move forward in terms of trying to develop downtown in the area that's been designated to its full potential as an entertainment district, we lose that. We lose that designation, that's damaging to downtown in a number of ways. And I think most of you know how that works, but I think that's an issue that has to be factored in. We have to move forward with positive things that create a unique and entertaining environment in downtown. So, I would encourage, from my personal viewpoint, I would encourage council to consider placing the instruments in their original location.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Tommy Hullett, 226 Cambridge Drive, Pottsboro, Texas. I'm on the board, the advisory board for Main Street, and I also work at the college and the Small Business Development Center where I have a number of business clients on Main Street. Our whole focus has been to get feet on the street for business merchants. And this program, to put the musical instruments on Main, is part of that program to create an entertainment district. So, I just wanted to let you know that I'm in favor of it, and I represent business owners who are my clients from Grayson College Community, or Grayson College, that also support having activity on Main Street. Thank you.
Don Bannon?
Mayor and Council, I'll be brief. I appreciate the investment the people are making in downtown. Probably the biggest concern I have here, which is very much, according to some of the statements here, is we went through a process very carefully. Council, city staff, Main Street director, we very carefully went through this over a period of time and made the decision. And I personally think that they should be there. You should have some expectation in entertainment district in downtown, where you have the police station, the fire station, the trains, and all of those that can make noise, Austin Avenue. It's very different than if you choose to be in a different neighborhood in Waterloo or out in the country. So, these types of things, especially with an entertainment district where someday we may have more places who have live music late at night, as long as the ordinance allows, there's going to be even more noise than someone. So, I encourage the council to replace the dances and stuff decision.
Thank you. Dean Cheney? Name and address, please, for the record.
Dean Cheney, 111 South Bannon. Previously, I was at 421 Main Street. Only one that has talked so far, that has truly lived on Main Street. I lived in a loft at 421. Originally, there was a piano that was down by Park, Heritage Park, that eventually got moved up next to the Rialto. I can tell you, at five o'clock in the morning, it is no fun having somebody pound on the piano while you're trying to sleep. It's not the two o'clock in the morning, or the three o'clock in the morning, it's the five o'clock in the morning. And it's, it truly is annoying. I've lived there for, I lived there for almost four years. I put up with the noise, every other noise. You now have the Rialto that has music on Tuesdays and Thursdays that gets out about, oh, 10, anywhere from 10 to 12 o'clock at night. They come out after 12 o'clock at night, and when the piano is there, they go over and set and play the piano. I understand that living in downtown, you're supposed to have noise. I accept having noise. As a matter of fact, I love the playable instruments. I'm also property manager for DDI, so I maintain Heritage Park. And we'd love to have the musical instruments in Heritage Park. In looking at the placement of the musical instruments, I was involved in some of the committee meetings with those. I love the playable art. I'd like to have it in downtown. After looking at the placement, though, I think we need to look at the placement more closely. The stuff that was placed in the 300 block, 200 block, and the 400 block, were all placed on the south side of the road, were all placed directly, or going to be placed, were going to be placed directly in front of the handicap parking. I had a medical equipment company in Dallas for 37 years. I can tell you, I had handicap signs in front of my business. Handicap people come in, they look at the sign, they hit the sign. I can tell you, if you place that musical part directly in front of a handicap spot, those people are going to pull into that spot, look at that playable instrument, and they are going to hit that playable instrument. That is a given. And you've got three of them outside the road, in the 400 block, the 300 block, and the 200 block. I don't have a problem with the playable instruments being on the street, but if you look at where they're being placed, almost every one of those is near lofts in the middle of the block. If you put them on the corners, down in the 200 block, the corners, there is not a single loft in that corner of the 200 block, between the 200 and 300 block. When you come up to between the 300 and 400 block, that corner, there is not a single loft on that corner. Now, when you come to the 400, 500 block, you have lofts on that corner. If you put playable instruments where there's loft living, I can guarantee you, you will have more police calls in the middle of the night, which you have to respond, which is going to cost tax dollars for those policemen to come down there for a playable instrument, somebody just pounding on it. It's not the people that come here that are going to spend money. The people that are going to be playing those instruments at two o'clock, or four o'clock, or five o'clock in the morning are our homeless people that are just wandering around the streets. I don't have a problem with the people that come here playing instruments during the day or during normal hours. Even our music on Main finishes at no later than 11 o'clock. We shut them off. This playable instrument has no way to shut it off. Even the piano has no way to shut it off. So, if there was a way to shut it off, you could shut it off at two o'clock in the morning and turn it back on at six o'clock in the morning. I accept the music and the noise downtown, but we shouldn't be creating a environment where we're going to cost the city money by having police respond to calls that are nuisance calls. And that's exactly what it's going to be. When they're in the parks, we have nobody living in the parks or posted those parks. Also, corners in the streets, we have nobody living on. So, we should consider the placement definitely not in front of handicap parking. And that's all on the south side of the road. Every one of those was going to be placed there.
Thank you. So, Donna, help me with the, with the process. I think Robert did a great job of speaking to the process. So, you know, it's easy to look at this in hindsight, but through that process, when the, when the actual locations were picked, did the committee, or you, or whoever, go to those property owners and say, hey, this is what we're doing, think about that?
I cannot say that we visited personally with every one of them. We, I send out emails, so I've got everybody's email address that, that has an email address. And so, I use that method to try to notify everybody of what's going on. And sometimes that could get caught in a filter. I don't know that they receive it, but I do my best to send it out. I'm not, I'm not saying 100% that all the details of the location and placement were sent out, but the process is that a representative sample, including loft owners, were utilized to make these decisions. And it was a process of public input and of the Main Street Advisory Board and the Design Committee making recommendations. So, we felt like we did our best to do our due diligence, but it wasn't a perfect, you know, perfect process.
Jeff?
If I could just make a recommendation, I hate to break out the flow of a good discussion, but we have a seven o'clock public hearing that we had scheduled. I'd recommend that we recess the item and pick it up quickly after we, after we hold the public hearing for the special meeting at seven, just to keep that as advertised.
All right. So, we need a motion to go into recess, or can I just?
You need a motion to go into recess.
So, move?
Second.
And motion to Councilman Hanley, second. Does anybody say aye?
Aye.
Pose like a sign. Motion carries. So, we'll go into recess now, we're going to our special call meeting, this won't take long.
Yes.
So, the time is to consider, one, public hearing out, that item is a public hearing on the annexation, voluntary annexation of, unfortunately, at him, I wait, 84, Mr. Rex.
Thank you. As mentioned in the previous meeting, we are required to hold two, two public hearings for this annexation. The first one was held at six o'clock meeting, and we're proposing to hold the second public hearing at this seven o'clock special meeting now.
Since the public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed, that item will get moved for a, a vote by the council on the?
November 2nd.
November 2nd. Okay. With that, the special meeting is now adjourned. We'll come back out of recess on our first meeting and continue discussion of playable art. Go ahead.
Well, I want to respond to your question, to say I can't. I'm not aware, as far as, as far as notifying specific property owners, and I do think the process was, was doing what they were doing. You know, in, in my opinion, I may be wrong, but the city council's goal is, is to create the commerce downtown, you know, and that's why we, but we've done a lot of things that I don't know we've gone to every property owner. When we did the entertainment district, you know, when we passed some of these other things, you know, whether it be a specific use permit or those things, you know, so we're, we're constantly moving forward to create this downtown area. And I, I guess I'm, I'm getting a little bit concerned with, with, with folks not understanding what the goal is. Because the goal is not to create a peaceful suburban living experience on Main Street. You know, the goal is to get people down there. And anybody who's been to Nashville, it's loud, but they don't have any trouble getting people to live down there, you know, because that's part of the, the living experience. And, you know, I, I guess that's where I'm, I'm a little bit frustrated with, with, with the, I guess the expectations of what Main Street is going to be is something the council really needs to either stand behind or not. If we're going to create this as an entertainment district, we're going to be dealing with this stuff. And certainly, if, if musical instruments at some point cause an issue where we are having, you know, problems with, you know, I'll call it a public nuisance situation, then, you know, then we'll need to deal with that. But, but as far as, as the commitment the council has made and the financial dollars that the council has, has made have all been in trying to create the environment of one that's an entertainment district. So, my thoughts.
100% agree. My, my question is, is I guess the location specifically as opposed to, I mean, I don't even know the mayor of moving into the corner, not particularly the corner. Bob, I guess y'all, y'all really vetted that out? The, the exact locations are?
For, for the park?
No, for the, the instruments. The instruments.
We flexed on that, I recall that, because it was getting people moving down the blocks. Donna, is that not correct?
Right. But I mean, I guess exact location, meaning on the middle of the block versus the end of the block versus, I mean?
My, my understanding, I was not involved in any of the committees or meetings, but my understanding from what I heard from reports from those individuals was that the bump outs in the 2, 3, and 400 block, because there was extra space available due to the bump out, and that's where the keyboard effect or painting was going to be done across the street, that it made more sense to locate and tie the instruments in together with the keyboards, so the keyboards actually made sense.
And we also had assistance from Ontario Consultants who helped us and the committees try to determine the best placement of them.
Okay. Go ahead, Dean.
They're not getting put in the bump outs. They're getting put to the, to the right, if you're looking at the bump outs from the street, they're getting put to the left of the bump outs, on the, on the bricks, not in the bump outs themselves. So, they're getting put right on the curb, right in front of a parking spot.
And how you're doing.
Chief Parks, I don't know if you recall, have you recollection of the piano downtown and having calls? I mean, I'm just trying to go back to something else that's maybe been downtown to have these calls or whatever. Has there been a, a lot of calls of nuisance in the past where people playing that piano at five o'clock in the morning like the one that I mentioned earlier?
We're not aware of any calls, sir.
Okay. Go ahead.
Question. Has the equipment been ordered? Is it on, is it here, or what's?
They ran their way to install it last week, and we had them turn around, and so we could have this meeting.
So, we don't have the pieces here?
No.
But they're ready?
We're committed to them, we issued the PO, and they're ready to install them.
Donna, is there, sorry.
Well, just, what are we qualifying as the downtown district? Is it only limited to Main Street?
Well, it's the historic district, so.
Does that also include first park? Does that also include Forest Park?
It's on the other side. Forest Park is on the other side, so it's not necessarily in the historic district. I consider it downtown, but, but it's not in the historic district.
Just me personally, and I will go against a lot of things to consider tonight, but I'm personally concerned about the instruments being on Main Street, and I know we voted to do this, and kind of like with our playground equipment, we reserved right to maybe relocate those, maybe in hindsight, we should have considered this also. But I'm concerned that there may be a distraction or odd hours. There's a difference between music and noise, and if someone's down there beating on that instrument at three o'clock in the morning, 5:00 AM in the morning, it's most likely not going to be music. And that's, that's my gut, it's what's telling me that that's probably not our best location. And I would see complement, the playground equipment in Forest Park is one option, if it's even an option. Maybe with the pocket park down here, that's going to create some noise isolation because of the walls on both sides, and I don't know how that falls out in regards to the loft apartments.
There's none in that particular area. There's some down the block, but none in that.
So, would the equipment we've got fill the pocket park, or would it?
We could put it in the pocket park. What we did was order two sets of three instruments, and so it would fit in the pocket park.
That's what the alternative recommendation is, right? Three there and three at Heritage?
Right.
My deal with that, I mean, they make sense at Heritage Park, but the pocket park, I just.
Well, as a, as a tip, what's our long, what's our five-year plan for the pocket park?
Well, we had, we actually have one, or we did.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
I have a picture of it in here.
That's not part of it?
It's like, no, it is definitely not part of it, and at that time, we didn't consider that in the first place.
I know what we recently had.
It's like a park that would be built out to have kind of a storefront with a park by a area.
What I'm asking, is that three years, five years down the road, or next month?
It's a waste of a front.
It's a waste.
Okay.
It's probably a $450,000 investment.
That's, that's what I recall, it's a fairly sizable investment. Is it smarter, knowing that these instruments are movable and relocation is a possibility, that maybe that'd be the short-term solution for the park?
That, that's the recommendation, that they would go there. I'm, I'm okay with either.
And I think the Council, as you recall, that kind of prospect, that particular edition, it's not.
Yes, it is.
Right.
Got it dead on, right. But, so, so of the six, are there, is there one of those pieces that is less noisy that could go in the 300 block that not, not be as, as?
I could certainly find out. I don't know the answer to that.
Because, because Heritage Park makes sense.
There's no writing on what those, like, the?
Should be.
I don't want to, I don't, I don't want to kick the can down the road today and go put three in, in the pocket park necessarily, but, but has no purpose there really. I don't.
Yeah, there's no purpose there.
I don't, at least not, not today. But in that vein, too, if we want to, go ahead and set them where the recommendation is, they can be moved out of that becomes a potential problem in the future.
Correct, if it's, if it's a nuisance.
Do they have a, is there a dollar amount tied to that to move them? I'm assuming they're just drilling bolts into the, those light bolts in and bolts are moved in. That's some city staff could do, or we have to have the contractor do it?
Are they core drilling, or they?
I think, I think they're drilling down and putting concrete down on the setup, and I think the price tag is about $200 for installation.
For all of them?
And the city crews could have done it, but we just hired it because, you know.
City crews, I guess relocated, has any, if the staff, anybody else in the staff answered that, would have used?
They might be out of tune.
They might be out of tune, so he said, but that's, that's another reason that we hired them. There's probably some sort of tuning that's to be done.
Okay.
Do you have anything to say?
I didn't sign up. I can talk, I can always talk.
I'm just curious what your answer is, as a long time?
Thank you for asking. I, I am on the Design Committee, and I'm on the Main Street Advisory Board, and as a resident and have a gallery and a business, I'm not fortunate enough to be in one of the positions where a musical instrument was ready to go, but I'm looking forward to having them downtown. I think they will be an asset. Like Donna, I'm, I'm not really real firm, it has to be this way, or it has to be that way. I want them to be where people can see them. I think they go well with the piano keys. I think that was part of the design idea, that where the crosswalks were, that the musical instruments would tie in with that. It's unfortunate, you know, people came in after we made the decisions, and I can understand how they feel that there was something that made a lot of noise. I've lived downtown for 10 years now, and I guess I've, there are a lot of things I don't even hear anymore. I don't, I, I, when we open the window, we're going to hear things, and I'm more bothered by motorcycles in the middle of the night that want to race up and down the street and not stop, because I know they're not stopping at those lights. I know they're not. So, that bothers me more. I've got a neighbor that's got a bell that's bigger than any of those on the Pagoda Bell, and when the wind blows, it's loud, but I don't even hear it anymore. So, I think some of those concerns are not going to be concerns, but that's just my one opinion on that. I think most of the music that they make, you'll be surprised at how low-key it is. I don't think it's going to be, I don't think we're going to, if we have somebody that's out there at four o'clock in the morning, and they're really hammering on a tree instrument out there, that's my opinion. So, there should be a phone call to say that they shouldn't be out there hammering on a instrument at four in the morning. I don't think that's something that anybody in our community would approve of, so that's more than you wanted to hear, but that's my opinion. Thank you.
Have we already voted on these in placement and approved it?
Yes, yes.
So, now, if we don't take, take any action on this tonight, is there any action that we need to take, any of this, are we need to vote again?
Yes, sir.
But if we don't take any action, reverse back to?
We're already, we're, is that right?
Mr. Mayor, this is just my opinion, but I think this was a well-vetted procedure. I think we went through lots of extra effort to, in this plan, and I think they should stay where they were originally planned. If it turns out to be a problem, then we'll address it.
Any other comments?
Should we take into consideration the handicap comment that was made about handicap parking and possible damage related to that in their location?
How far off are they off the curb?
They're in the paper bed, which is right next to it. Part of our streetscape plan was to add curb stops, which would add some distance where they could pull out, so we could also add those to give us the distance there.
Yeah, I think our, we certainly want to make sure that we're in compliance with ADA guidelines and keep those spots open, so if we need to move things a little bit to make that happen, we can do that, again, keeping in time with, keeping in tune with what the Council has approved.
I'm interested, Councilor Goff. If, if we have an issue, I think this Council has proven time and time and time again, if, if we make the decision that's not in the best interest of, of the vision that we've got moving forward for the City of Denton, we're going to revisit this, and I think we've proven that, so.
Same for me.
I, I can relate to that, I just, I have concern, depends on how loud the bell is and stuff, but.
I agree. So, any motion? No motion? I, I think it would be, make sense, Donna, if we work with the property owners for 300, try to find if there is one that, that is, that's why it's loud, let's, let's try to do that, and, and see how it goes, of the steps that y'all already put down, they're on their, on their way. All right, the Council will go on to executive session pursuant to chapter 551, makes the government vote to discuss, uh, whether, uh, the, 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 time is 7:20.